Programs in our schools. That would include visual art, performing arts such as music, dance and drama.
That needs to take such a high priority. I am so glad you asked that question. Funding the arts is paramount. I work at an alternative to expulsion school and we don't have an art program and I just started one. And the kids love it. And I think that's so important. I think that's such a neglected aspect of our society as a whole, the de-emphasis on the arts. You know, we're all artistic and, and I actually heard, I hear that as an artist and as someone that went to college for history, that's not a revenue generating profession. That's not going to get you this, this or this. That's not going to get you a house. That's not going to get you a car. But it's what made me happy. And it's what made me successful in school. And when we take those programs away, we limit the amount of spaces in those buildings where our students feel safe. And when our students feel safe, they feel empowered. And when they feel empowered, they learn.
Thank you. Amanda?
Thank you. I think the arts is very important and funding is very important for the arts. You, we have to remember, not everyone is an athlete. So there's sports for those that want to be in sports. And the arts is, is another avenue for those that, you know, are not interested in sports. It gives them a place to belong, to be involved. Um, it also is another means to help encourage their schoolwork because as we all know, when we participate in these types of activities, whether it's, you know, your inquire, all of that, your grades have to stay up. So it's another factor strengthening and stressing the importance of their education. And I believe it's very important for funding to, to continue to go to the arts and, and as needed, you know, make adjustments to keep it still there for those students that want to be involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Ariel?
Funding the arts is very important. I think there's Reese, not I think, I know there's research that proves too, that being able to express yourself in various ways in the classroom helps with learning as well. So not only is it something that students would enjoy and feel like they belong to, but it could actually help academically. I also think the arts is an area for people to shine who maybe don't feel like math or, you know, public speaking is their strong suit, but that gives them an opportunity to express themselves and feel validated, which makes them feel more comfortable. And all of that leads to a more positive sense of belonging, which is gonna lead to positive student outcomes overall. So I absolutely support funding of the arts.
Thank you. Daisy?
I also believe that funding the arts is very important. One of the things is, you know, a lot of the times we focus on just academic subjects like math and science and all those, those are very important. We also make, we have to make sure that we also look at the arts as another subject that has just as much importance as the other subjects, right? That we tend to focus or invest more money into. Another way that we need to also, or another thing that we can possibly do is really figure out ways to also incorporate the arts within those subjects, right? To enhance the creativity, of course, of the students, but also to create a sense of, of understanding how they actually correlate with one another, right? You can have science that is creative, that, that involves art, the arts. We, we can't have other subjects that also involve other creative ways to make sure that the students are utilizing whatever it is that they feel most more comfortable with utilizing, right? And enhancing their knowledge within whatever other subjects they are also choosing to, to better their skills on. So definitely, like I said, enhancing and incorporating it into the current curriculum.
Thank you. Jose?
Um, the arts are, are huge. Whether, I mean, there, there are athletes that are artists and there are artists that are athletes. And there are ones that are just either side of it. I've come in contact and while as a school resource officer, as a teacher at K E C, that the extracurricular activities or the non-traditional academic activities that go on in the schools are the only reason why some kids go to school. They're not interested in figuring out, you know, what, uh, you know, A squared plus B squared plus C squared or equals C squared is. But they can actually use that, that knowledge to build a set on a, on a theater set. So the, the diversity of the way people learn can be transferred into the arts. Math is involved in, in music or in, in set design, in tempo of, of speech. It's to, so to bring that possibility of X educational experience to all parts, it will be important.
Thank you. Next question. What recommendations do you have for the district to assess and address the academic and social emotional fallout from the pandemic? And Amanda, would you start us off with that, please?
Oh, I, I think it's, uh, you know, I touched on it briefly when we asked about what do I think is the biggest challenge going on right now? Emotional wellbeing is huge. I think we need to just make sure not only children feel safe, but that we're listening to them. At the end of the day, every child is different. So, you know, someone may not have a problem wearing a mask and other children, it may, you know, heighten an anxiety, you know? We really need to listen and understand and find a way to, I don't know if comfort, comfort is the right word, but to help in those situations. Because it, it is a time where everyone is, is feeling different things. Where one person doesn't think, you know, it's, it's a big deal going back to school. Another child may be carrying that fear. So really just listening and, and working through individually with a particular child or a situation. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Ariel?
A way to address the academic and social emotional consequences from the pandemic is to start by listening, actively listening and asking people what they need. So teachers, what do you need to feel equipped and supported to go through these transitions? Students, what do you need from your teachers? Really figuring out what everyone's needs are and then doing our best to address those. I think it's important that, um, you know, as a board member to really lead with flexibility and to encourage flexibility as well as compassion. Because this is a time that none of us have ever experienced. And so it's important to, for us to really prioritize the mental and emotional health of everyone involved. Because at the end of the day, that's more important than a score report. And we can't achieve those positive results that we want if everyone's mental health is suffering. So creating space for compassion and empathy support and just really figuring out what it is people need and doing our best as a team to provide that for each other.
Thank you. Daisy?
I also believe that it is important for us to really evaluate the student as a whole and meet the student where they are at. I think a lot of the times, you know, we focus so much on just bigger picture that we lose sight on the idea or the, you know, that not every student is, is where, is at the same level, right? So we really need to focus on issues of equity and really understanding that equal access does not mean, you know, equity when it comes to supporting our students. So one of the big things is meeting the student and also their families and the, and the supporting staff, right? On where they are at and really try to figure out what are the best ways to address those concerns? Whether it's a student that has special, a special, they require special needs or support for special needs, or whether it's mental health, or whether it's, you know, food insecurities. We really need to really think about our community as a whole and try to start thinking about how we can work together rather than separate entities. Really work collectively, not only within the resources that we have within the district, but even within the community, ensuring that we're also bringing in a lot of the community services that we currently have so that we can maximize, you know, that networking opportunity and of course of support for all of our students, from mental health to education to, you know, everyday wellbeing of the student as a whole and their families, of course, and the staff.
Thank you. Jose?
To, um, to listen and observe. I had a training when, when I first started at K E C, which kind of opened my eyes, could never really thought of it this way. How everybody experiences trauma in one way or another, and what may be traumatizing to somebody may not be traumatizing somebody else. But throughout their lives, everybody experiences trauma. This is a trauma that the entire nation, actually the entire globe went through at the same time. How they're going to react to it's going to be different, how they're going to recover from it's going to be different. Many people talk about that it, it takes just as long of a time, if not longer, to recover from a trauma than it did to suffer the trauma. So we can't be just looking at what's going to happen in September or August and September when the kids come back. But what's going to happen, you know, March and April, when they're going through the anniversaries and the new numbers and everything else. And the most important part, as mentioned before by many other candidates, is listening. Listening to the staff, listening to the students, listening to the parents, because they're all going to have an effect on the recovery that we're going to have to go through.
Thank you. Tony?
Thank you. So we need counselors. Just gonna let that sit for a second. Our country and our schools, we've de-emphasized mental health. So I agree with what Ms. Harness said earlier about schools being in person and helping the students' emotional wellbeing. I think that's true, but I also think part of the coin, the other part of the coin is that a lot of the national conversations that I'm seeing are saying that remote learning has been bad for students' mental health. And while I think that's true in a lot of cases, I really don't think we were addressing those issues adequately before. And I think going forward, we need to put a renewed emphasis on the mental health of our students by having more counselors in the building. I'm willing to admit that I suffered complex childhood trauma and I didn't have access to a counselor. And I wish I did. And I don't want that to happen to our students. I also think we should be looking at how counseling can benefit our teachers. If we want to talk about teacher retention, why aren't we looking at occupational therapy for some of the people that work in our buildings to prevent burnout and therefore increase retention?
Thank you. Moving on to the next question. How can the district and the board encourage more involve, involvement of parents, families and volunteers in the schools? What will you do to make that happen? Ari, would you start us off, please?
Sure. I think something that I can do to encourage more involvement from parents and families within the schools is figuring out what's important to them. Different people and different families value different things. And so I think the district, excuse me, the schools do a good job of offering things now, but there's always room for improvement. So I think it would be interesting to talk with parents and families, meeting them where they're at physically when it's safe to do so. Figure out what sorts of things are interesting to them. If we're wanting to engage with parents and families, we have to make it worth their while. And so not, not making it like a, a one-way operation, like, oh, you should come to the schools because of this, but really making it worth their while and figuring out what would make them want to come to the schools and really making it feel like an equal relationship. So I guess my suggestion is to be more relational and community oriented to get people involved.
Thank you. Daisy?
I believe that we have to do more to build community with the families of the district. A lot of the times, you know, we engage with conversa, or in conversations because we feel we have to, it's part of our job. But in reality, you know, to build community, you have to do more. You have to go out to the community. You have to engage. You have to make sure that you meet them where they're at. It's not always about them coming to us. It's about us going to them as well, making sure that we are supporting the events that are important to different community members within the district, right? And understanding that we have to engage in conversations, not only because we have to do it as a checkoff box, but really because we really genuinely care about their voice, having a voice at the table, not just the seat at the table, but a voice there where they can tell us, you know, what is it that they would like to see more of and engage them in that process of, you know, making sure that they feel engaged in the process of their students' education, so that they can feel supported, validated and celebrated within, obviously the students and also with their, their families. If, if we're able to do that, then that's a win-win for everyone, for them as, as members of the community and for us, because we can get them to be more engaged in things that matter to them.
Thank you. Jose?
Think, uh, we mentioned the arts and the activities that the students are involved in. Is to make sure that we continue those, promote those and make sure that the parents understand that we want them to show up to those things and not just the ones that their kids are in. You try to promote the kids that, the cross-culture of, of arts and athletes, athletes and arts, academics and, and arts and all of that to make it one school or one district activity of supporting their schools and being there. And the others celebrate the people that do volunteer. Create some type of award system, whether it be volunteer of the month, volunteer of the year at each school. Bring them up in front of the board. We, you know, we have public meetings to where we can celebrate the, the parents that actually take part or the volunteers that help. And we can reward them for their efforts publicly, let them know that it's appreciated.
Thank you. Tony?
So as a teacher, naturally, when I think about, about volunteerism, I plan to lead by example. You know, you always model the behavior you want to see for your students. And hopefully that rubs off on people and, and they want to follow that lead. I've said a couple of times on this campaign that, that my dedication to the families and students of this community doesn't end on April 6th and I stand by that. I also think that what Daisy said and meeting people where they're at is essential. So how does the single parent interface with the district if their work hours and their commute add up to 10 to 12 hours a day? How are we contacting that parent? When does that parent get to talk to teachers? Because it's difficult. People don't want to have those conversations at 7:00 PM, 8:00 PM, 9:00 PM. But sometimes that's the only time you get to talk to those parents. And I think that's so important. How do we find those voices that haven't been in contact with the district? And then how do we amplify those so that we improve outcomes for those kids?
Thank you. Amanda?
Thank you. I'm going to piggyback off of Tony because he was thinking along the same lines as myself. As my children were going through school, I was a single mother. And I was in a job that was hourly, so it was really hard. You're there for the certain hours. Hard to make it 35 miles back for a school function. So I think one of the nice things with what has been going on with e-learning is have the ability to not so much cater to that, but maybe start being creative with activities in the school, or if there's an elementary school play and parents are invited, maybe be able to stream that so a parent could take their break or lunch at work and be able to, to see it. I know not being there, it's a little bit different, but being able to see that rather than just hear about it. So start thinking outside of the box, trying to think about those, those individuals and parents that have the traditional nine-to-five job, work out of town and, and work outside those hours and find opportunities to include them in the things going on, whether it's the school board, classrooms, activities and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next question and Daisy will kick this one off. How would you like to see the school board handle issues that have arisen as a result of the growing diversity in our district?
One of the biggest things I think of, one of the biggest assets of our community is that we do have a community that is very diverse and it's growing, right? One of the biggest things for me is making sure, again, validation of the community members that we are serving. So for me, one of the big things would be, how would I, in my ideal world, is making sure that students feel themselves validated, celebrated and supported, not only by the district and the teachers, which they do an amazing job. And I have to say that. I, as a parent, have witnessed it firsthand when teachers recently just came to my house. A couple of weeks ago, my daughter was selected to be student of the month. I know that the teachers care. I know that the, that the teachers want to see their students succeed. So one of the biggest things that I would want for students to do with, I mean, for us to do is really to celebrate our differences, right? And understand that those differences make us a better community. They make us who we are and we have to keep up with, you know, the changes, but I'm excited for those changes. I'm excited for what's to come and I'm excited for students to feel themselves reflected, validated and supported. By continue, obviously, to, to see themselves reflected, validated and supported by the teachers in the districts and the district members. But also, um, within the curriculum, right? That, that the students see themselves reflected within that curriculum is important for me as well.
Thank you. Jose?
You know, the, the whole diversity question actually kind of, I'm torn on it. Because we're more alike, humans are more alike than we are different. But we're also different enough that we have to look at each individual student and, and how they're dealing with their educational experience separately. We can't throw them all in a group. Once we've identified that they have the same issues as possibly some other students, we might be able to do them at a tier, a tier two level. But right now, to, to be able to look at the, the problems of all the various different issues that students are dealing with, to try to set up a plan now, be able to deal with specific groups and say, this whole group can do that. I think we miss out on the individuality of the different students. And that's something that I would like to bring. That conversation is something I want to bring to the board.
Thank you. Tony?
Just to hop off something that Jose just said. We are more alike than different, but I, we don't have similar opportunities or experiences. As a straight white guy, it's my job to listen. It's my job to listen to those communities and, and try to amplify what they're saying and, and understand and help promote the idea through curriculum that we don't have similar opportunities and experiences. The fact that we need to have a Black History Month or a Women's History Month, because every other history month is White History Month. Those are things that need to be addressed through curriculum. I didn't have, as a white guy, it wasn't weird to me that I didn't have a person of color as a teacher in my classroom until I went to college. But how is that making our communities better? How is that showing leadership and, and positive cultural masculinity for different cultures than myself? Or femininity? How are we putting those things into our students if they're not seeing how diversity is so important and needs to be celebrated?
Thank you. Amanda?
Thank you. Um, it's, it's not a, a secret that we have a need for diverse diversity within our teachers. So I think that's a good place to start. Along with that, the listening and understanding and bringing everyone together. I think sometimes we focus on, on certain things and, and, and not looking at students as a whole. But I think we can start in this district as the diversity with the teaching staff and recruiting from, from diversity and, and being open and receptive to new ideas. I mean, I think we have a great district. Maybe we need to reach out and solicit feedback on ways that the teachers or the staff feel things can be for the students. So I think it's bringing everyone together and, and listening and understanding and then developing a plan to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ariel?
Way that we can address the issues that come with a more diverse district, we can rely on the experts. There's a lot of experts at NIU. And as I shared, that's one of my goal is, one of my goals, excuse me, is connecting folks. So the unit I work for is called Academic Diversity Equity Inclusion. We do consulting, we do presentations, we do trainings. I know there's amazing educators in District 428 who are eager to learn more. So like, let's do it. Because NIU has the passion to teach and collaborate. Let's tap on these experts. We also, I think NIU is, there's a really great opportunity for mentorship. There's a lot of student organizations who they love to get their service hours in through mentoring. So as we're seeing more students of color and LGBTQ students within the district, conducting them with people who are older and are successful. Because, you know, if you can see it, you can be it sort of mentality. So I think that's a way to address, in addition to curriculum, which is hugely important, and to just making sure that we're really, again, writing into that strategic plan, the great work that has already been done, which is reflected in the diversity report.
Great, thank you. Next question. List specific ways the school board can provide additional support to teachers. Jose, would you start this, please?
Well, I've mentioned before about classroom size. I spoke to teachers. One of their major concerns is that they can't give the attention to the kids that need it because they, they're trying to balance almost 30 kids in their classroom. So what, you know, having a plan to try to affect classroom size, there's a committee on it already to, to, to have school board, um, membership attendance at that meeting to, so that our strategic plan is looking at five and 10 years out that I was talking about. Uh, the, the other, the other support is showing them that we care. A few years back, the, the board sent a letter to the teachers that really was, it, it kind of put us against them. And I don't think that was the right direction to do, or right thing to do and is going in the wrong direction. We're all a team. The community and the teachers are a team and we represent the community. And we have to pay attention to that and live that when we talk to them.
Thank you. Tony?
Said it before, I'll say it again, we need counselors. We need counselors for our teachers. We piggyback off of what Jose just said. It's absolutely true. Classroom size needs to be reduced if, if possible. We need our teachers to have autonomy, or I'm sorry, yeah, autonomy on the ability to collaborate. Also, Jose said earlier, talking about incorporating the arts into our curriculums. Teachers should be allowed to be creative. We should be allow, we should be empowering our teachers to have that curricular freedom and that ability to collaborate with people from other subjects. We also, I think one of the things that goes undersold is we need professional development that is relevant and will help people do their jobs better. We don't need to be trotting out the same type of professional development that hasn't been working. We need to be getting that feedback, asking those good questions from teachers. Do you think you're going to use this in the future? How will this improve your professional practice? And those things need to matter. They can't just be slips you sign on your way out the door before a three-day weekend.
Thank you. Amanda?
Thank you. Um, I think the first thing is, is listening to them and asking them what is needed. I mean, I truly believe teachers are the greatest asset and without them, we don't have a district. So when you have your greatest asset, you want to make sure you're listening. Not always are we going to be able to do everything that they're asking, but I think soliciting that feedback, asking them what they need, you know, maybe looking at best practices. If there's something working in one of the schools, let's take that best practice and let's share it across the board so that other teachers know what's going on. Cause you know, each teacher is, is in a grade or whatever, is teaching the same curriculum, but they may have just a different spin on how they're doing it and they're seeing success with students. So I think focus groups, bringing people together and having them share things and listening. I mean, at the end of the day, listening is the key. We, we have to be open, receptive, listen and then work together to make things happen for change. Thank you.
Thank you. Ariel?
A way as a board member that I could provide additional support to teachers is creating more spaces for them to share feedback, to share what they need. So we all know that the board meetings are public, but as a teacher who's working all day and as we know, teachers often do a lot more work than what's on their, you know, standard schedule. They don't always want to go listen into a board meeting at night and share concerns and they have their own families and things like that. So something that I learned while I've been canvassing this election is just that teachers would appreciate the board engaging them in other ways. And again, that's not like any disrespect to the board now. But, um, I think this is another opportunity for creative solutions. And just as the schools should be meeting families where they're at, the board has a lot of opportunities to meet teachers where they're at as well. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Daisy?
I also believe that it's important for us to make sure that we provide them with those, the support that they need, right? Validating also, a big thing for me is validating their experiences. Because we know that teachers are knowledge holders and they are experts in a lot of things beyond the classroom setting, right? So understanding that if, if we validate those things, you know, we may be able to, you know, feel, they, they are going to be, feel more included in the decisions that we are making. Understanding that they also have firsthand experience with the things that, not only that they need, but that their students need. So making sure that they not only have a seat at the table, but also a voice, a, a voice in the, in the strategic planning possibly, you know, in creating a committee where they could come, aside from the teachers' union, right? Understanding that there's other ways for us to support them, where they feel included in the process so that they can know that they are validated and that their voice matters in that process. So making sure that, um, we create a, access to professional development that matters to them as well, that can help them. that can help them better serve their students and better, and be more effective with whatever it is that they want to do, right, within, whether it's curriculum based, whether it's personal to professional, whether it's them trying to start organizations with our students, whatever it is, we need to make sure that they feel supported and of course, validated in that process, as they also enhance, of course, their support for our students.
Thank you. Next question. We currently have elementary schools with eighteen to twenty students in a class and others with twenty-six to twenty-eight students in a class. We have a school that raised twenty thousand dollars in a single fundraiser and another that struggled to raise three hundred dollars. How could the board help fix this inequity in resources and opportunities? Tony, would you like to start, please?
Of two. Those resources need to be shared, and those resources need to be allocated. If we're talking about fixing these problems, we can't be caught up on notions of, well, it's not fair that this school did this and this school only did this. I don't really want to hear that. I want to hear best outcomes for all students. So when you donate that fifty dollars or that hundred dollars to your kid's school, you know that that's going to the community of schools that serve this city. We can argue about, about access to all these types of things, but until we put aside this whole idea of fairness and unfairness, all that money needs to be pooled together and needs to be distributed to our schools equally, because that's the only way that we rise, we rise all boats, all right? We want everyone to be successful. So why is it acceptable for us to say, well, these people raised this much and these people only raised this much, that's just the way it is? That doesn't fix the problem, that just segregates the problem.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you, absolutely, I agree with a hundred percent with what Tony was just mentioning. Unfortunately, I have seen that going through the schools where fundraisers were raising different things, or you get the flyer that this, this school is doing a fundraiser at Chipotle or whatever it is. I mean, why don't we look at it as if the middle school, if Clinton Rosette, you know, is doing a fundraiser, why doesn't Huntley do it at the same time? So the middle school is doing it together, same with the elementary schools. So that everything can come together and it can be for the district, and it's worked together. I mean, it's different when you're looking at, like, you know, if the French Club wants to go on a trip, they're doing that individually for the French Club. But when you're looking at a certain school fundraiser, it is something that should be looked across the board. And I know we talked about the different classroom sizes, that's something that can be looked at. I know they have the overflow school, so maybe reevaluate and shuffle how they, you know, allocate students to certain schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ariel.
I also think when it comes to funds and just the inequity in them, that we have to look at it from inequality versus equity model. And in this case, like, we want to be equitable. And what I mean by that, you know, equality means everyone, the same for everyone. But that's not always helpful, especially in situations like this, when there's a clear inequity, like the time, that's where we want to lead with an equity mind base and then giving more where the resources are needed. So that might not always look the same, but the end goal is going to be that equality that we're achieving. So I think just really moving more in a community oriented direction and choosing equity in this case, to make sure that things are distributed so that the district as a whole can thrive.
Thank you, Daisy.
I am with Ari on this one, that it is important for us to make sure that we, even as a board, right, that what we have control of, that we also make sure that we are being equitable in our distribution of resources. I think a lot of the times, you know, we again, think about schools as a, let's give equal, you know, access to, equal access to resources all across, because that's how we're going to better the system. But the reality is that all of our systems, all of our schools, depending on where you are in town, they all function very differently. And all of them have different resources, all of them are supporting different types of students. And again, if we don't start thinking about bigger issues or bigger, how systematically we are disservicing our students, we are not going to ever reach a level of equity unless we start addressing those bigger issues of concerns that ultimately lead to us tackling those equity issues that can build equality, right? But unless we start looking at resources and how to actually distribute them in a way that is going to be suitable for, based on the needs of the schools, then we're going to miss an opportunity for us to actually support those students beyond their role of, hey, you know, we have this cool fundraiser, yes, we do, but we also have money behind certain schools, because sometimes that comes, that money sometimes comes from the parents. Some of us have other opportunities and maybe other students at other schools don't have, so we have to look at that.
Thank you, Jose.
I think one of the things we have to look at is the school plan. Every year, the principal should be coming to the school board, explaining what their plan is. I didn't, I don't know the data that you're bringing forth or the question brought forth, but that school, one, the low school may not even been trying to raise money. Or the other school may have put an emphasis on raising money. I agree that, that the spoils of the fundraising should be spread around the district so that one isn't, one school is not getting deprived of their needs. But we also want to make sure that, that we're looking at the schools to make sure that, that their priorities are set up to where they are getting what they need. What the principal believes, the school needs are getting that. And if it needs taking from, from one school to go to another, that's, that's what we should probably be working on. But we can't just look at two numbers and say, okay, well, it's not, it's not fair. Because that's not necessarily the whole picture.
Thank you. And moving on to the, the last question of the set questions, preset questions. And Amanda, you'll be the first to answer. How will you support the new superintendent to recruit and retain teachers of color?
Thank you. I think the biggest thing is, is we need to understand why some were leaving, because we had a large amount leave a few years back. And I think to understand what went wrong, what is the idea of the new superintendent and to listen to her plan? You know, she's coming and bringing new experiences and, and is, it's going to be a really exciting time. I, I truly believe she's going to bring a lot of change. And she's going to have an action plan. And I think once we, we listen to that as a board and, and move forward with it, the hiring process should be different. You know, today, I'm not sure exactly what goes through, but I think we need to be looking outside. And also, we have to remember, we have to keep the community attractive to want to have people move here and join District 428. So it's a lot of key factors, but just supporting and listening to the new superintendent and then moving forward with her plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ariel.
The way that I would work with the superintendent to recruit and retain students of color, I would follow her lead, she is a justice oriented leader, she's highly qualified. I also would be eager to share my own feedback. I was a part of, during my time at the University of Wisconsin Whitewater, I was a part of a research team where we studied access and retention for students of color. And I feel like a lot of the information just related to people of color could be transferable to teachers as well. So relying on that expertise. And then also looking at our, the interview process for teachers and recruiting, what that looks like, and ensuring that it is friendly to people of color and inclusive. Making sure that our district is really a place where teachers of color would want to work, so.
Thank you, Daisy.
Well, for me, I would definitely like to work with Minerva to make sure that we are building, you know, a unit of, or a coalition really, of support for us to not only recruit, but also retain students, building partnerships. I know she's very big on building community and utilizing community resources. And of course, build, creating those bridges or, or creating bridges, of course, that can unify some of those services and support, of support. So really, work collectively with her to make sure that we are going out to the community. We are building connections and relationships with institutions that we have, you know, around the corner, but outside of D.C.A.L.B. as well, to make sure that, that we are building those communications early on so that students or student teachers can come and feel excited about, you know, hopefully not only teaching as students here, but also moving forward to eventually, you know, want to work for our students. Again, a lot of that starts with the celebration of diversity, right? When teachers feel themselves reflected and validated, they're more inclined to stay here and support our students, because they know that that's a priority to the, to the district. So if we are able to make it a district commitment to enhance that and celebrate the diversity and understand that we can't, you know, come from a model of, you know, everybody is the same and we see no color, because you see color and you should embrace that color and you celebrate that color. So for me, it's very important that we understand what that means when it comes not only to educating our students, but also supporting the staff that we're trying to recruit and retain here.
Thank you, Jose.
The first thing is listen to her plan, it was mentioned before. She's coming in, she was selected for a reason. Listen to what she, what her plan is, work collaboratively with her. Support, support that plan as much as possible, but since we represent the community, the board, bring her to the community as well as bring the community to her, so that she can understand the needs of the community of, of the various different sectors of our community. We have a very diverse community. And she, I know she has seen it, she has an experience to get. And we can bring that experience to her and have her understand what, not understand, have her meld her ideas with what the community needs are. And then, as I mentioned before, support it.
Great, thank you, Tony.
I'll be the fifth and final candidate to say we need to be listening to our new superintendent and working collaboratively with her. I think we all see the importance of that. But I also think that in conjunction with that, the district needs to have boots on the ground. We need to be getting applications and actively seeking prospective employees from communities of color. We need to be going to job fairs in diverse communities. This is something I've been harping on this entire campaign. We need to be, like I said, collaborating with the superintendent, we need to be collaborating with NIU. Our relationship with NIU, which is a diverse school on its own, needs to work together so we can help maybe get some of those student teachers to come in here and start building those relationships so we can retain them and want them to come and stay. And finally, I think that subs, substitute teachers, after a certain amount of time served, we should start by trying to talking to the university to get tuition waivers so that they can get certified to become teachers. This would promote people to become teachers from within the community, and it also can fix our sub shortage.
Okay, well, thank you all very much, that concludes the set question. Samantha, as I gather, has received quite a few questions and I will turn the event over to her, thank you.
Wonderful, we actually received exactly three questions. So everybody who asked a question will get their question asked. So I'm going to start with the first question that we have for the candidates, and remember, this is an audience member tonight. If elected, will you commit to not raising taxes? And we're going to start with Ariel.
If elected, I don't have the sole power to not be able to raise taxes. I recognize that our district has significantly tied our taxes compared to neighboring communities, and that's a burden. So it would never be my goal to raise taxes. I'm not comfortable saying that I absolutely cannot raise them, though. So that is my answer.
All right, Daisy.
As I've stated before, I know that the tax, as a homeowner myself, I understand that the, the burden is great, you know, when it comes to taxes. And then the amount that we pay, I understand that we are one of the highest districts. So I, I understand that, because I pay them. But I also think that it's important for us to understand that, well, first, I cannot sit here and tell you that I am a hundred percent, you know, it doesn't lie just on me, there's a lot of us, you know, I'm only one person and there's, you know, more people in this board. But I, I would never intentionally want to raise taxes, because I'm part of that, right? I'm part of that group that pays taxes as a homeowner here. So that's never the intention, however, I do, whenever I do actually pay taxes, I see it as an investment to our children. I see it as an investment to our community, I see it as an investment to our teachers. I see it as an investment as a whole, because if we don't start, if we don't start with by bettering our educational system, we are not going to attract newcomers here, right? We are not going to be able to spread the tax burden amongst all taxpayers. We are not going to be able to provide all of the support that our students need. So again, the goal is not to raise taxes. The goal is to make sure that we are being strategic about how we spend money, but also do it in a way that is effective and it is also an investment to our children. Because at the end of the day, none of this matters unless we are providing the appropriate support and, and resources to our students so that they could thrive and, you know, excel beyond, you know, their experience here in D.C.A.L.B.
Thank you, Daisy, Jose.
Interesting story. This weekend, I had to go to the airport to pick up my daughter. I filled up at the Tollway Oasis by O'Hare, because it was cheaper than here. We're paying too ma, too much taxes, it's been mentioned. But I, I mentioned at the last forum that I was, you know, I listened to George Bush say, read my lips, I will not raise taxes, and they had raised taxes. What I can commit to is that if I ever vote or have to vote to raise taxes, there will be a time limit in which those taxes will go back down. We will calculate how much money we need to solve the problem, how long that period of time, how long that tax would be in place to pay for that, whatever event that is. And then that goes away, there will be a sunset time on any tax increase that I would ever have to vote for. I hope to never vote for one. But I don't believe in raising them and just leaving them up there.
Thank you, Jose, Tony.
So as I've said several times, we've been asked this question, I'm not going to make any promises. I think that would, because I'm going to be called a liar either way, no matter what happens. So I'm not making any promises, especially when I don't know what I don't know. Especially when it comes to what the state's budget might be for the schools in the wake of how COVID's acting. I don't think it's possible for us to either say yes or no right now. We don't know what we don't know, like I said. But at the end of the day, kids, our students, are more than just a number, they're more than just our tax burden on the city. So at the end of the day, I'm not spending my time focusing on hardline, hardline yes or no position. In fact, I think it's a better use of time for all of us, everyone in the community, to focus on how effective each dollar is.
Thank you, Tony, Amanda.
Thank you. So I, I need everyone to remember that as a person, it's one vote. So I can sit here and say that I would never vote yes to raise taxes. I pay taxes, and every time I write that check, I think about how we are one of the highest taxed counties in the country. So we have to be more creative as a board to find other ways. There are ways to save money. So it's not about raising taxes, it's about using, using the funds, which again, remember, a hundred and four million dollar budget, using those effectively and really being financially responsible with the taxpayers' money, because we are on the board representing taxpayers and the community. So if we want to attract new talent to our community, we cannot keep increasing taxes. If we want new homes to be built in this community, which were not happening right now, which means there's no new taxes, we have to stop raising taxes, thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. All right, question number two from our audience members. Board members receive a lot of data by which to make decisions. What experiences do you have in reviewing data to lead strong decisions? Daisy, we're going to start with you.
What experience do I have? I have actually served on several national boards and local boards here within the university and in other organizations that I am a part of. So I have experience with benchmarking. I also have experience with strategic plans, which also requires looking at data and making sure that we are making decisions that are aligned with our, whatever our mission and our vision is for that specific course. So I do have experience with that, I have actually participated in a lot of the committee, several committees actually at, at NIU in particular, which is of course where I work. Working with the strategic plan, making sure that we were looking at, of course, again, benchmarking other institutions and making decisions that were based on not what other institutions are doing, but really what's going to serve and what's going to help the students that we serve. Because what other places and other districts are doing may not necessarily meet the needs that our students have. So yes, looking at their experiences and looking at what they're doing and possibly utilizing what they're actually, what has worked for them and seeing if it works for us, but not necessarily just taking their whole plan and adjusting it and meeting it for ourselves, because it doesn't really work like that. So I have a lot of experience with looking, like I said, at, at creating So I have a lot of experience with looking, like I said, at, um, at creating strategic plans and of course, looking at data in, in order to create better decisions with whatever it is that we're deciding on.
Thank you, Daisy. Jose?
As a officer in the United States Army, we deal with a lot of data. We deal with data from within our unit, from within, uh, the higher unit. And I've had international relationships with, with, uh, the leaders of the foreign, uh, foreign countries military. So I have to take data from them and put it into my plan. So building all those plans creates a lot of data analysis and capabilities and, and timelines and all that. And, and not much of that information. And quite often, I was just a cog in the wheel, yet I still had to process it for somebody else. And I'm planning on bringing that experience to the board.
Thank you, Jose. Tony?
This is going to sound weird. I love data. Okay. As, as someone with a master's in education with a specialty in curriculum, I've been looking at ways to analyze data, to improve best practices, how to use data to, to look at qualitative versus quantitative feedback. And I think that's something that all of the candidates are good at here. I think we're all great at looking at what we're seeing in the schools and drawing that, that quantitative understanding of the data that we're, we're inputting into ourselves. But I also think we need to be looking at numbers. Like, I think, you know, I've, I've done research on school policies for, for my master's program. I mean, I'm literally holding the diversity, the diversity plan right now. Like, I love data. Like, that's one of the things that I've found about myself throughout this process is how excited I am to look at numbers. So I'm prepared for this to be my day-to-day existence.
Thank you, Tony. Amanda?
Thank you. Um, so in my professional career, I deal with data all day. So, um, I handle large corporate accounts and we do quarterly reviews. I have to do business plans, handling budgets, um, new year pricing. So every day I'm dealing with some sort of data in regards to analyzing, trying to find cost savings, trying to find, you know, where something's wrong. So, you know, as, as Tony said, I love data. I mean, I deal with it every day and dealing with the data that would come forth on the board, you know, you have to remember to keep it confidential, if that's the sense, if it's not being published um, for, for the public, for the parents and the students and everything like that. So we just have to remember that some of the stuff is very, um, keeping it to ourselves and just analyzing and working with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Ariel?
I have a lot of experience reviewing debt as well. Um, in my role, I oversee a retention program for women of color. I lead all assessment efforts with that. So, you know, benchmarking, survey design, all those things. Um, I've also been a part of strategic plan committees at the university related to diversity and equity. Um, when I was a part of that research team in Wisconsin, um, a lot of the, the professor that I worked with, I did a lot of reviewing her data. Um, and so I have experience on like both ends, both reviewing it, creating it. And so I have, I wouldn't say I love it like Tony and Amanda, but I have a deep appreciation and I know its value and I'm very comfortable, uh, engaging with it. I would be uncomfortable engaging with it as a board member. And I've looked at a lot of the data so far within the district just to, you know, prepare for things like this. So.
Ariel. All right. So my third and final question from the audience. What will you do to provide value to hundreds of constituents who pay thousands of dollars in property taxes, yet do not have children enrolled in District 428? And we're going to start with Jose.
Well, I'm one of those. I, my kids did enjoy the benefits of the district, but I no longer have kids in the district. So my property taxes are going towards the education of the community. So where, where I see the value is that the, the more educated and the better districts we have, the more people will be here, uh, come in here, which will spread the wealth and hopefully be able to lower those taxes. Uh, the other is that, I mean, we brought up the arts and the athletic athletics before. I know NIU is a great place to go watch football, but I really do watch it. Friday Night Lights is pretty cool. And I've seen some really good theater performances at the high school. So to, you know, explain to this, to the taxpayer that doesn't have a school in district, what the benefits of that, of having a quality district in your community is, would be one of the ways that I'll be able to, um, explain or give value to the money they contribute to the community.
Thank you, Jose. Tony?
Whether or not you have your child in this district, we all have kids in this district. These are our kids. We need to have ownership over all of our kids. We need to make sure that, that we're giving them the best opportunity they can to be successful. Okay? Because every time I hear about, oh, the crimes going up in this city, oh, I'm scared to go out at night in this city. That's a reflection of our investment in the education system. So when we say that kids, when I say that kids are more than just a number, that's what I'm saying. Your taxes go to keep those kids in school, your taxes go to keep those kids moving forward and your taxes go to keep your streets safer at night. That's the most important part is that we take communal ownership over our kids and we invest in them in a way that's deeper than just what our tax bill is.
Thank you, Tony. Amanda?
Thank you. I think for people within the community, the taxpayers that do not have children, their main concern is the board being fiscally and financially responsible so that taxes don't have to increase. So the best way to do that is to make sure the board is being smart with the budget and making sure that as we move forward, you know, there is not going to come a time when year after year taxes are going to, to increase. So I think that's the best way to do it is just to be responsible with our role and the budget for the district. Um, because when we're responsible, we're also going to attract, like I believe Jose said, people wanting to move to this community. And right now we don't have new construction. So the limited homes that are on the market is that, that's all there is. So without new construction, we don't get additional taxes. So we want the community and the schools to become great so that we have more construction and the ability for more people to move to the community.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Ariel?
Um, I'm also a person who doesn't have kids in the district. Um, and I think helping taxpayers, like as far as the value, um, really helping them to see the benefits of that community oriented approach that Tony talks about. How when we have better communities, like it's better for everyone, whether you have children or not. Um, and also to what Amanda was saying about, you know, the concerns about fiscal responsibility, making sure that as a board, we're being transparent about what we're spending. Um, you know, taking opportunities to find some of those creative ways to save and things like that. So I think overall, um, validating the concern of those taxpayers and also helping them see some of the benefits of, um, investing in our children in schools.
Sorry, I had some technical difficulties there. Finally, Daisy?
Being fiscally responsible is key. Um, I don't think that any of us really, again, we want, we don't want taxes to go up. But we also understand that sometimes it may be necessary to make decisions based on the needs of our community. Um, so what can we say to someone that doesn't have children in the district? Um, you know, I'm blessed that I do have a child in the district, right? Um, but even if I didn't, like I said, I'm all for investing in the community because when you invest in the community, you create a better community, not only for the children and their families, but also for all of us as a whole. Um, a, another thing is, is important for us to understand that a large portion of our money or the tax money that, 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 um, we obviously have to deal with, a lot of it goes to paying our educators as we should, right? And a lot of those educators are members of this community, are taxpayers as well, and we should be investing into them, right? Um, and of course, again, when you have a better educational systems, you have more people that are willing to come out here to spread that burden, the tax burden, and also there comes amenities with that. The more families that you have out here, the more, the more businesses that right now you may have to travel 30 miles for, there's opportunities for those businesses to want to come and invest in our community. Because again, we are thriving and we are growing and if we have that, then that's going to benefit all of us, not just the people that have children. So when these big restaurants come or these, whoever it is that's coming out here and, and giving service to our community, when they're coming in here, they're serving all of us. They're not just serving families with children, right? So again, it's important that we invest so that we can reap the benefits as a community of student success and of course, of everything else that comes with it.
Thank you, Daisy. And that completes the audience question. So I'm going to hand it back over to Deb for closing statements.
Right. Closing statements. And, um, I, I'd like to start with Ariel for that. 60 seconds, please.
Um, so thank you so much, everyone, for organizing, listening, candidates. Um, I always like to finish high end and just remind you that my main priority is making sure that students of all identities feel safe, supported and excited about learning. I think the way to achieve that as a board member would be through collaboration, accountability and a validation of everyone's experiences. Um, so I'm ready to serve and make District D428 the best one possible. There's a lot of great work already happening and I just want to elevate that and also get to work and think critically about how to make it even better.
Thank you. Daisy?
Well, why should someone vote for me, right? Um, as I said it earlier, as an educator, I am committed to supporting, advocating, validating and celebrating the children of this district. And of course, um, because I believe that every child deserves equality of education. Um, if elected, of course, my emphasis, like I stated earlier, will be to prioritize the needs of our children, the families and the staff. Um, as others have already mentioned, or have, many of us have mentioned throughout this forum, the district is doing amazing things. The teachers are also doing amazing work and we need to continue to build, uh, coalition as a whole, as a community, so that we can, uh, continue to thrive as a community. Uh, when our students excel, our community thrives. We need to focus on that being the priority. Um, I encourage all of you to visit my website at daisieramirezfordekalb.com. Um, in case you want to, you know, look a little further into a lot of the things that I, that I stand, stand by. You're also welcome to visit my social media pages as well. I'm on Instagram and on Facebook. And of course, I look forward to answering any questions that you may have. I encourage you to go out and vote this April 6th and of course, vote for me, Daisy Ramirez for District 428. Thank you.
Thank you. Jose?
Um, we'd like to thank the, the Cal Public Library and the election group and the other candidates for attending this forum. I'm, I would like to be elected to the board to continue my community service, to support the students, the teachers, the staff and represent the community the best I can. Uh, I commit to listen to the community, to, to be a part of, of activities both in and out of the school arena uh, so that I can appropriately bring the proper perspective to, uh, the office of school board member. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony?
So I've said this throughout the campaign, but my work doesn't end April 6th. That's just one date in a series of dates that, that will continue to come where I will be trying the best I can to give back to a community that I care about so much. And aside from, from any sort of stumping at the end here, like I've gotten to meet four other people who make me feel like this school district would be in good hands going forward because I've gotten to see their passion. I've gotten to see how much they care about the students, the staff, the families, the community. And I think that's the most important thing. We're all here for the same reason. Uh, some of us will have different ideas about how to best get the most for our, for our school community. But I think that we're going to be in good hands regardless.
Thank you. And the very last word goes to Amanda.
Thank you. Um, so thank you for putting this together this evening. It was very nice. And I think the other candidate, it's such great to see you guys tonight and thank you for participating. Just real quick, I think, um, I, I bring a unique person and fresh perspective. Um, being from the business world and not the education world, it balances out and it, and it helps bring another thought or another way of seeing something and also kind of opens it up to, to maybe understanding the stakeholders that are coming to the board to speak. So I would just like to say that I'm really excited. I would be honored to be a part of the board. And I really think, um, that, you know, all the candidates are very excited. And I would just appreciate you to go out and vote on April 6th. Thank you.
Well, this concludes, um, our Q and A of the school board candidates. I, I want to thank everyone for, all the audience for coming and everybody on Facebook who's watching and, um, the library, thank you, Sam, um, and the candidates, especially the candidates for, um, spending so much time answering all these questions. So thank you very much. And I think it's time to say goodnight. Yeah. Um, good luck on the 6th.